All this committee of the whole meeting to order. On seven oh two P M on.
Versus.
Yeah, so September sixth. Sorry, I'm. I would like to recognize that we are on treaty five land, traditional land of Natchez way secret nation. Homeland make you and I would like to just, I was just at. In N C N and they have just inaugurated their new chief and council as of today. But chief of the bachelor and council there that will be taking the reins is looking forward to working with us immediately. Thank you. Next, I would like to have approval of the agenda. Council all three, that we bear landmark all in favor. Carry. Allegations. We have the K A O daycare for both the copper car lot, if you want to come forward, state your names, bring another chair with you, if there's only one there. Basically, we have about ten minutes there to tell our story.
I'm Crystal Chaba, I'm the executive director of K O grassland state cares and my name is Courtney Reeves, I'm the board chair. Um, as you may know, K O daycare relocated to forty four copper road September of last year. Um, the lot is a very small lot, so we have very limited space for our children to play. Um, now the schoolyard is located close, yes, but during the school year with recesses and everything, we're very limited to time that we can actually use that park. Um, so we use forty four copper rope or we use the copper top lots located on copper road. Um, as you know, it's it's been many years since the park has been operated. Um, it contains one round squarely slide and four swings, two baby and two. K O would like to partner with the city. Um, and take on, K O would like to take on responsibility of upgrading the equipment. Um, at that site so that we can use it for daycare, of course, like it would be city owned property. And the city would still be responsible for maintaining the site.
Basically, your story.
Yeah.
Is there any other questions from council? How's responding?
Just wondering how many more parks they want, they can take them all as far as I'm concerned.
Let me start with one.
No, this is a great idea and um. It's nice to see your organization step forward to offer to do this. The one concern and only concern that I would have would be with respect to reliability or sorry, the liability. Um, there are standards for equipment that is put into parks and I assume if you work with the city. Sorry.
We understand, sorry, we understand that and we know like there's quite a few rules and they have to follow even as a daycare center, but we would. We know like the different substrates that you have to have on the ground, certain percentages, I don't know about you guys, but we know we have to have a certain percentage of green space on top of. Sand or something like we know that there's roads that we have to go, so that's something we'd work with city. Um, I guess inspectors to figure that stuff out, we know exactly what we need to put in.
Done and that's great, thank you guys for stepping forward.
Call her over.
Thank you, first of all, coming, um, I read this with interest on the weekend. I again agree with council if I make a check mark there. Uh, that certainly do you have parks that 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 means a lot of work. To see someone step up and say we will pay for the equipment, we will move that up, yes, it's still city property, it would belong to us. Uh, I don't think the city has enough money to do all the practice we have.
We understand that.
So, so I certainly gained my interest as well, and I think it's a good thing and if we can work with the details with the city. Uh, we will forward and do that, then I think we could probably get something off.
Thank you.
Well, I just wanted to go a timeline this year.
Um, it wouldn't be this year, like we would probably use the winter to fund race with hopes of installation next summer, yeah.
Anybody else? Deputy Mayor Hammer.
Yeah, thank you, Chris, I appreciate your efforts. Good time, um, I'm sure that the institution will be able to require the director of recreation. The reason we need to adhere to and as as you would take care and so that this works out, we appreciate it so much. Appreciate you, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Hey, I both three years with beginning or just beginning of our term, we did a parks inventory and saw where we were lacking in that. And I think definitely working with the city, I think will definitely be a benefit to you and to us. To get this, so basically moving forward, we'll have discussion on it later and somebody will be getting back to you.
Okay, perfect.
I appreciate it, I think it's great idea.
Perfect, thank you.
Thanks.
You're free to stay if you wish and rest the council, but if you wish to abscond in this nice seating, you can. Thank you very much. Next, we're going to go to community comments and feedback. Second call, anybody have any community comments or feedback?
Ron Natachuk twenty hours three. Notice on the agenda that there's gonna be no paving this year once again, that's two years in a row for you guys. I'm wondering, are you people learning yet what shovel ready means? Because that's what this is all about, Thompson was not ready for it, waited till the last minute and everybody got busy and along comes Thompson and again, nothing's gonna happen.
Thank you, sir. Uh, any other comments, community feedback? Seeing none, thank you. There are no going into reports. Six point one is our audited financial statements.
I'm sure we'll just have it from the items from this year financially. Um, the audit is, I'm all that opinion, you know, it. Cause that's really the financial position being taught them. Um, so the balance sheet, there's a couple of key items in the balance sheet this year, the first one, the yard cash, our cash balance was fifty three million compared to their name last year. The largest reason for that is the Isaac funds, we received a differential share of both water and road project, a fund of several ninety million dollars. Um, thirty forty million dollars, we had a cash look of one point seven million. Our E R was reduced by one point two and we also held our city's portion of the I C funding and the reserves as well. Uh, the recreation or sorry, the receivables have increased, however, the taxes will have increased. Um, and then there's schedule eleven, big details of that one. After for revenues as well have been creeped by the thing around the cash out, the yeah, the funds are staying around each other products completed. As her progress and those refineries, we're starting to do when the capital. The long term debt has been reduced by one point two million, so the current balance is four point five million again in twenty twenty one, there is really no significant changes that's been made so far. Um, we start coming up the next few years, but the balance have been reduced quite a bit in the last couple of years. Now the tangible capital asset have decreased by four million dollars, meaning we added less. Capital and has been depreciated, so the capital added was two point two seven five, the depreciation was over six million, so our balance part have less last but again. Uh, we consolidated our operations, which are losing our expenses. Um, user fee have increased from last year, obviously, including the name twenty twenty, the production that we use. Uh, we have the end of month revenues in twenty twenty one, we're higher than twenty twenty as well as the rest. At ten months of the year, which is pretty soon. Um, and other revenue, the largest item is the county firm, we see that as well, we had to allow. Also, definitely have some that have. It worked through inspection, so it's due to the value that they're standing. Other than that, other, this really had done with the gas tax. Um, under expenses generally, they're all less than budgets due to the fact that we have a short follow up shortage stop last year. Uh, we had expensive things, subscriptions also did under setting up the budget. And then the general government, it was hard to begin years, there would be allows for double accounts, some large amounts that outstanding tax event and. See, well, yeah, that's. Uh, protective services have increased, contract lawyers and people was finalized in twenty twenty one, and that balance has been an important statement that was higher than. Um, the only other significant one in there is the water sewer, there was an increase from last year, last year we had seven months of these more. We get those expenses this year, four year, I started planning for one four year list. Um, so we annual deficit or certain sorry, it's three point eight eight million, last year's twenty seven million, you can be. Please. So just kind of go through some of this, the schedules for later, schedule two, give some more details, overview of all the running, some kind of more more detailed with items. Pretty neat for those, as schedule three does, they were extended. As schedule six is our reserve balances, so the reserve balance increased on four point eight million dollars this past year. Uh, the wire and sewer, your eyes of funding, uh, come from the most three million dollars of that. Uh, the gas tax was doubled, that's like a crazy, to one point five million and there was no keeping with that, that's here, so that all. Um, schedule eleven shows the reconciliation of the outstanding tax, which has increased by even a thousand dollars. Uh, we have one large copy that's determined as well, and that's probably outstanding, which is a lot of that amount. And then schedule fourteen, just outlined the cash surplus that aligns kind of matched how the how is funding, so there's one point nine six five. Million this past year, giving you relax, we've used all the position savings that we had the last year and it's.
You can also, I mean, I think we're menstruation ourselves. Council. Comments? Thank you very much for the report. So nothing, we don't move forward. Six point two is a report from the director of development and technical services.
But. Good evening, uh, this is the monthly information report provided the council on development technical service update. Not gonna read the memo, uh, but if there are any questions. Uh, to take them there.
Any questions on this? Yep, seeing that. Move on to six point. Three, uh, I was gonna say the permit comparison, everybody is saw them also, I'm not saying.
Just the mayor's group, make a quick one before we move on. Thank you, um, yeah, I would just. Uh, in regards to the report and the comments at the outset, um, I think it is a little bit unfortunate that no paving will be taking place, but. Um, I'd like to point out from the report that I am happy to see that administration is preparing to tender. These construction packages for December, maybe January, um, much sooner, so. Hopefully, um, we see a bit of a catch up and if there is a silver lining, um, the water and sewer work is going ahead. And it's a condition to get the paving done eventually anyways, so just a couple of my thoughts on that report, thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me, Mr. Natachuk, please. Okay, thank you for comments. We're going to move on to. Six point three, report from the director of public works. Who is reporting?
All the reporters, sir, and director of criminal intent tonight. There's a report here for council and street maintenance discussing power repairs and as well of our sweeping programs. The curve inside of all crews have completed riverside, westward in Brooklyn areas, currently working to areas. The law pair crew has completed a hundred and forty two lawn repairs to date. Um, they're currently working in the Brooklyn area and have completed subsequent Jennifer Riverside, Westwood, two areas. Um, there's a hundred and eighty two total that have been on the list for this year. So we're getting very close to having that product, parks and green space maintenance. Continued maintenance of those areas, the new jumpstart park as a high volume users, um, but we are seeing issues with graffiti and vandalism that's there. Um, there's a report here on some of the vandalism, we'll see. Wow, their current owners coming to do some work on the court surfaces and they're looking to switch the movable nets to permanent nets. Um, there's a planned auction online later this year. Um, that has to be sorted out by the city, waste disposal ground information is there, then there's also a water sewer report. Of all the repairs to the different types of utility that have been done up until the end of August. Um, water sewer repairs completed and ongoing work, so that's really what we call board, showing what is the current as of the way to this memo. And then, uh, there's an overview of repairs and ongoing work and training at the water treatment plant and the wastewater treatment. Happy to take any questions, if I can't answer them, I will bring them back to the director to answer the council.
Thank you, any questions? House.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, um, that's a question, more of a comment, I, uh, I was in Winnipeg and happened to have been raised on Facebook and I finds out the fire at our new park. Uh, that's small park. And I think it was significant enough that I believe mayor and council should be notified of something like that and. And so I would ask in the future when we get that, I don't need to see it on Facebook, I want to get those questions to all of my colleagues. I think in order for us to address that, we need to know what's going on, so just asking that we may get that communicated to us.
Thank you. House Sir McMyrdal.
Um, yeah, thanks, Chris Book, uh, just wanted to say good, good work to, uh, the public works department for getting those lawn repairs done and hopefully the outstanding forty can be completed this year as well. Um, it's nice to see the fire hydrant replacement down, hopefully that's a short term investment in those, then the delineators to mark them better and and not have the, uh, the damage done when there's snowbedment. Um, in regards to council elsewhere's comments, is there anything that, uh, we can do to to help deter those acts of vandalism at that new park? I think it's been floated around about a camera, proper signage, but that would be something I think for this council looking consider.
Yeah, so there's been several literary discussions about the possibilities of camera, and we've also spoken to residents who live in the area, there's been discussions of changing the hours that the lights are on. As residents in the area reported that it's not necessarily kids who are out at say eleven to twelve at night, but kids who are showing up at here four in the morning. Uh, causing some of this damage. And we've also requested that C S O don't work that late when they are out to patrol the area as well as to have the R C M P increase controls. But if council wishes, we could price up some cameras and bring that back, that's the potential for that area.
Any other comments on your report? Okay, seeing none, uh, next, we're going to go to the mayor's report. That's from August sixteenth to September the sixth, two thousand way to. Along with the city manager, Anthony Guinness, we met with Dr. Kerry Hudson Recto on August sixteenth. Along with councillor fountain landmark improving city manager, Anthony Guinness, we met with the point in time team on seventeen. They attended, I attended the North Board to open house out on August nineteenth and I believe other councillors attended on the Saturday. Also, elsewhere for sure. And, um, along with councillor Ellsworth and Valentino, a Ukrainian day fundraising was held. And I also attended a Canadian investment bank meeting, the C D R on. Re-election information session for mayor and council and school trustees was held on August thirtieth. And I attended Kuwait tribal councils special assembly in its relation of their first branch chief, Liz Walker, is Jessica. On September the first. Uh, yesterday, Labor Day, councillor Ellsworth and myself, we attended the barbecue at the steel center where there was over twelve hundred. Hot dog or hamburgers and a thousand hot dogs, we literally went from quarter after ten right until they ran out of food at one thirty. It was a very busy day and attended by, uh, a lot of the community. And today I had seen on Facebook that chief and council were being installed in Natchez way secret nation. So I took upon myself to just drive out and show support and it was a great afternoon and I ended up. Being seated at the head table so I could read before the speeches were in, which why I was waiting there. And that's our mayor's report, um, for that. Okay, next, we're going into finance, seven one is Q two, R C M P go, Jenny?
Oh, sure, so we received the Q two, uh, the link twenty twenty two, uh, the total billing was one point six nine dollars, uh, which is pretty good, I mean, for a more. Our consolation of twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two year. Um, that didn't include the wage increase, uh, we had been charged for the money to quarters, the first two quarters after the. On the combined, um, we had a three hundred and sixteen thousand, based on the. Current, however, the reconciliation wasn't that because we had been those for the first four thousand dollars. That T is good here, but we only use four point five, so there's no credit for that as well. Um, and the twenty twenty two Q two, uh, it's over about quarter by sixty thousand. However, the offset by the explanation about two years today, six thousand, well, under budgeted. Um, to know that we are now only charged thirty one point five, but we're currently operating at a two point six point oh nine, so we'll recharge that additional amount in the future. There was two items, uh, issue on the accommodation expenses, so I slipped into their C P and they removed those two thousand. And now ten thousand, I'm not trying to what happened, but we'll be in the building. So we would expect that it's your remote rule budget based on both of the plans that we could be having as well as.
Good, make question. Seeing them? Thank you. Do you have anything further that you want to hold on that?
I don't know, I guess I don't have consensus to.
Okay, so we have consensus to take it to council meeting next Monday, I have special hands. Okay. You know, the consensus. House for Alfred.
Madam Mayor, it's a lot of point of that if you're looking at the, the. The reconciliation reports and the agreements that was made, uh, but I did read that the, uh, F C M and A and this is still lobbying the government. Uh, we haven't paid for that, is my understanding, and they're still lobbying the government, looking at thinking out those costs.
Yeah.
So really, it's a way billing at this point. But hopefully a resolution will come forward then, because it's not just about what we all know, it's about going forward as well, that's another big piece of that. Which is a significant cost to the city, not only this city, but all cities in town across the province, about all and the whole country. So I just want to make where I keep, I keep track of that and there's still a lot in on that, so thank you. Thank you.
Next, we're going to develop. A member, a memo from the director of development, technical services in regards to Manitoba hydro land agreement.
Yeah, so currently, uh, C M F coordinates, uh, and these, uh, one, that was known as the river wash property. Uh, they have recently sold or in or insured or ended losses and selling those building structures to not have to buy it. Uh, as part of that transfer sale, Manitoba Hydro requested a new land lease to put into place. Uh, C M F had a twenty year land lease in place or a new construction, a new that at least. So now to the request, uh, actually, over the twenty year lease. Um, over the past months, all the necessary steps have been put into place to ensure that we can operate out of this facility, those improve his own bylaw amendments. And conditional use application for the purposes to the council. Um, we've had a draft restock with reviewed by both parties and have come to an agreement on the draft language, which is contained within your briefing package for tonight. Again, this is a twenty year land lease, uh, the. Conditions and and content of the lease are all essentially the same as what they were before. Uh, there's one slider, one minor change with regards to insurance requirements. Um, natural hydro is self insured, so they will take the insurance ultimately where they had previous landings. Um, but all other content is if there, there's the default terms, payment files. Uh, the price remains the same, and this price remains the same as well as a, uh, an increase, an annual three percent increase. For the life of the. Uh, so as for the land and memo, I'm just looking for consensus to get this this more to, uh, when it comes to.
If we have any questions before we get vote on moving on. Okay, uh, by show hands, there's an agreement to move it forward to council. Who's opposed? Move forward, Audrey, you can put your hand together. Very, so you can move it forward now. Next is a letter from the honorable, the opinion minister of transportation and infrastructure and renewed. Three regards to the city of Thompson, letter regarding provincial heart from highway number six, you want to just do the highlights of that?
Sure, so this was a letter that was sent by the mayor on behalf of mayor council with respect to, uh, provincial trunk highway number six. The concerns there are over the safety of the highway. Um, ministers pledged their interest in working with the city of Thompson, the commitments, the plan changes and improvements to the highway. Um, highlighted the service work that's being done between the border and South Rapids, that's expected to be finished this fall. Um, natural infrastructure is also resurfacing, doing surface preservation on. Um, P G H six north of the provincial road P twenty eight this coming season and there's sections of twenty six Palmer Celtic Grand Rapids to Grand Rapids. And we'll order an access to the junction of P R three seventy three and from P R three seventy five. Um, updates on the project found online and there's a map and, uh, there's a twenty five Palmer section of the virtual trunk highway six north of Grand Rapids. That's being considered for inclusion in the department's multiyear capital. Um. And then it's basically a thank you for your letter and looking forward to work with you in the future.
Thank you, and further to transportation on for the highway on the way to Nelson House today, as the end, uh, there is not a spot of gravel. Where you have those patches of gravel you have to go over, it's totally paved, it was a very great highway all the way, uh, to about fifty to a hundred feet short of the entrance to N C N. Uh, make sure you realize what you have, but, uh, the highway there is actually, yeah, I haven't seen it that way ever before, so. Uh, definitely thank you to anybody that's been involved for the upgrades, not through the, uh, you know, advocacy of all of us, so thank you very much. Uh, with that, just before we adjourn it, let's remind everybody that you have to, oh, it's a dollar, so it's all, sorry, um. House your call.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, uh, just a quick question with regards to the letter from the province. Uh, the province records the amount of traffic that runs up that highway six, both heavy traffic as well as light traffic. They do that at a number of locations and I'm wondering if it's not possible, if we don't have those, that data already. Um, if we can't get that data to aid us in terms of lobbying, you're probably well aware, we've lobbied a lot. For highway six, both from electrical charging stations to bathrooms to, um, road repair. Um. It it would be good to have that data to back up that lobbying effort.
Okay, Anthony has already taken over that, thank you, anyone else?
Uh, can I follow up, so that that means we we haven't accessed it yet, is that correct?
No, the city is not, does not have that data, the city has access to data. No, the city is not, does not have that data, the city has access to data that's been taken on the highway inside the city, but we don't have it along the actual highway down south.
Thank you.
Okay. So, between now and September twentieth. September twentieth is the deadline for getting your nominations in for mayor, council and school board trustees. There is a few people in each category, but definitely need more people to run for elected office, so please remind people to. Put your name forward or come and talk to people or anybody that's interested, you reach out to Anthony, you can reach out to Marma How, S E O. If you need some more information on what to do next steps for running, so I look forward to having people run in the left side.
Yeah, just know if you're interested in school trustee, you can also reach out to Lajo Bartlett at the school district office.
Thank you. With that, we're adjournment. Councilor Ellsworth, Councilor Popper, all favor.
All right.
Thank you.
Have a good night.